Bring that up to you.
That'd be a new way of generating a little extra.
You know, that takes probably.
I'm surprised you didn't have one of those.
That was a fine machine.
It does well.
They may have.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, call me, Thor. For those who care to, please rise for an opening prayer, slip of the flag. You lead us some word first, sir.
Absolutely. Your heavenly Father, we, uh, ask, uh, thank you for today. We ask that you bless this meeting and, uh, lead and guide us through throughout each agenda item and just be with us, Lord, in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A few announcements tonight. The City of Ashcroft will be hosting a regional meeting workshop in the Missouri Municipal League Thursday, October 29th. Uh, please see a red bulletin for information. If you'd like to attend, please let Brenna know for registration. Uh, there's also a Green County Mayor's Association meeting that night at 5:00 at the City of Ashcroft as well. So if you'd like to attend, you can attend both. Uh, those are sometimes very interesting. And also, Presiding Commissioner Bob Surtin, uh, of Green County will be holding a town hall meeting, October 5th, next Monday, at 7:00 PM at the Republic Branch Library Community Room. Uh, urge you to ask him any question that you would like regarding anything regarding Green County or jail or anything else that might be on your mind. Like to open a public hearing concerning an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification to approximately 14.8 acres owned by RLDC LLC and located along the 400 and 500 blocks of West Gray Street from Plan Development District PDD to identity of single-family residential R1H. Welcome, Mr. Tyson.
Yes, sir. This site is currently located within the Sunset Landing Plan Development District, and within that PDD, it is designated for multifamily housing at a density that would be consistent with, uh, your typical apartment unit complex. Uh, the proposal is to rezone this property to the conventional R1H zoning district would, which would allow for, uh, your conventional single-family, uh, housing at a density with minimum lot sizes of 7,000 square feet.
Thank you, sir. Anyone wishing to speak for this particular public hearing, please come forward, state your name, sign in, give us your best three minutes.
My name is Rick Wilson of the Wilson Survey. I represent the owner. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I think Garrett has already given us a good summary.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for this particular public hearing, please step forward, state your name, sign in, give us your best three minutes? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against this particular public hearing, please state, come forward, state your name, sign in, and give us your best three minutes? Seeing none, since the particip- uh, public hearing closed, like to open it up now to assist participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please step forward, state your name, sign in, and give us your best three minutes? Seeing none, since participation closed. On the next item, I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Notion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries. All on the financial report. Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, we have a couple of things on the agenda tonight. First off, um, everyone has received a copy of the sales tax collection reports, um, bringing us up to speed for the month of monies collected by the Department of Revenue in the month of August. I alluded to this at the last meeting where general sales tax collected was $251,880.08. Uh, keeping with a robust pro- uh, progress for this year, we are 10.71% over this time last year, and so I'm pretty confident that we're going to hit the 2 million mark before this year is over. Secondly, as, uh, as stated before, fire sales tax for August collected was $31,482.42. There are 7.71% ahead of last year as well. And motor fuel tax, $36,789.93, and that's 4.64% ahead of last year. So we're doing quite well with sales tax collections with a thank you to the Department of Revenue. Speaking of which, I also asked that, uh, handout be, uh, sent around here. Uh, it's a citizen summary from a recent audit of the same Missouri Department of Revenue by the Missouri State Auditor's Office, and for the benefit of counsel and our viewing audience, a couple of, uh, points here. Uh, the second one, regarding cash bonds. Um, as stated, the Department of Revenue has not attempted to return any unclaimed cash bonds held for closed businesses, nor turning it, uh, turning these monies over to the State Treasurer's Office Unclaimed Property Division. Basically, these are sales tax bonds that are, uh, paid by those who wish to have a sales tax license and to collect and remit sales taxes to the Department of Revenue. Uh, normally, this is about three times the business average or estimated monthly sales tax liberty, liber- excuse me, liability for that business. In some cases, with bigger retailers, that could be, that bond could be thousands of dollars. Uh, what has happened is that, uh, the business can request a refund of that sales tax bond if they have been compliant with, uh, state tax law for two years, collecting and remitting the taxes timely. If, uh, but it is on the business itself to contact the depart- the department has no mechanism in place right now to alert the business that you are compliant and you are due a refund. Uh, if another three years goes by, that money should be going to the Unclaimed Property Division. It's not going there, so approximately, what we'll call it about $20 million is currently sitting in the Department of Revenue's coffers that could be going back to businesses either opened or closed and could be basically going back into the state's economy. So the State Auditor has asked that a system be put in place. That system will not be, according to Department of Revenue in response to the audit, that system won't be in place until next July. So the moral of the story is, if a business, whether opened or closed, has a sales tax bond that they have not collected back, they should ha- contact the Department of Revenue to see if they can get those monies back. Because we're talking about $20 million going back into the economy, that's a significant amount. So we're putting that out there for the benefit of the public. The second thing I also want to mention is timely discounts. This is the 2% discount that a business can take if they file timely with, uh, their sales tax returns with the Department of Revenue. And, uh, per the handout, approximately $105 million for fiscal year ending June of 2014 was taken by businesses, um, as opposed to going into state and city coffers. So therefore, uh, most small businesses are going to realize perhaps maybe a couple of hundreds, maybe a thousand or $2,000 in sales tax discounts over the year, but the big box retailers that are paying those kinds of taxes that are going to see those kinds of discounts. So don't be surprised if the, uh, General Assembly wakes up and realizes how much money they've been leaving on the table and starts to take a look at possibly having a cap on those discounts, eventually bringing money back into all levels of government. So that's something else to keep, uh, keep in mind as we go forward. One other item is at the top, the sales tax rates. Apparently, the, the DOR doesn't have an adequate system for making certain that, um, jurisdiction boundaries are maintained in a computerized mapping system. Therefore, it is possible for a business to have perhaps the wrong city code, and thereby, the sales tax that they're collecting could go to the wrong jurisdiction. Now, I contacted DOR Sales Tax Unit recently, and basically, it's, it looks like it's basically our fault, Jerry. In other words, if we find that a business has been coded wrong, we can request that they fix their database. At the first, we've got to find it. And they do have a webpage on their website where you can type in an address, and it will tell you which city and code that address is located. So that is, that is a discussion for future in terms of how we can assure that all of our businesses are coming into, coming into the right city code and making sure we're collecting the sales tax revenues we're going to be collecting. I would say that's a minority of addresses, not the majority, but it's still money left on the table. So it was interesting to find that, uh, that information gleaned from the, uh, sales tax audit, and we're passing that along for everybody's benefit. And with that, I'm done.
Questions, comments, discussion, Mr. O'Donnell?
Is, is there any kind of, uh, action plan that the City of Republic's going to take to, to go back and look at these city codes, address codes, the cash bonds for the businesses in the city, anything like that?
At this point right now, um, we, we, there are no plans formulated because the audit was just completed, and the press release came out September 15th through the Auditor's Office. This is brand-new information that we're just, we're just taking on now. So with respect to cash bonds, um, that is going to be between the businesses themselves and the Department of Revenue. That's why we're getting the word out to say, if you think you're, you know, you have a sales tax bond that's, that the Department is holding, then they need to contact the departments to determine if they're eligible for that refund and to make the appropriate, uh, steps to get it back. Okay? With respect to the sales tax rates, again, like I say, this is something that we're going to have to take a look at to see what kind of a game plan that we can create in terms of how, how can we be sure that all the, uh, business addresses, all the sales tax licenses within the city limits are properly coded? Um, that is a needle in a haystack, and we're going to have to take a look at that so that we are not unnecessarily spending resources. Uh, so that, you know, again, that is going to have to be discussed.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Questions from staff? Mr. Chriskey?
Yes, sir.
Derekson? Welcome, Mr. Keely.
Definitely is a buzz and a ticking back here. I'll make sure you were there.
That's, that's your friend.
Chief Lawton's just raising eyebrows with a buzz and a ticking.
Sounds like an old dot matrix printer, my friend.
Future community events for the remainder of September and into October, now through November the 12th, uh, and into November too, November the 12th is our arthritis foundation exercise program. We hold that on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 1:30 PM at the Republic Community Center. This coming Friday, October 2nd, is the last day registered for fall adult basketball. The game days will be on Wednesdays and played at the Republic Community Center. This coming Saturday is Republic Pumpkin Day. Uh, on Mondays, on October 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th, we offer Toddler Open Gym. That's at 10:00 AM, and that's held at the Republic Activities Building. A week from Saturday, October 10th, is Movie Night at the Amp. A movie starts at 7:00 PM, and the movie is The Goonies. It's a free event. October 17th is Republic Community Foundation Trivia Night. That's at 6:30 PM and held at the Republic Community Center. On Friday, October 23rd, is our 7th Annual Boogie Bash Celebration. This will be our second year we've held it at the Amp. It was really, really successful last year. Uh, that evening of events begins at 5:30, costume contest at 6:30, movie at 7:30, and that movie is Into the Woods. On October 29th is Senior Movie Day. The movie is to be announced, but that's held at 3:00 PM at the Republic Community Center. And finally, on Halloween night, uh, Saturday, October 31st, is our 19th Annual Treat Yourself in Republic Celebration. From 5:30 to 8:30 PM, we'll issue a map of all participating businesses and organizations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
More questions, ready schedule? The Board of Adjustments, October 1st, Capitol Perma, September 30th. City Council, October 12th, October 26th. Planning on zoning is October 29th, or, I'm sorry, October 19th. On the old business on the table items, Bill Number 15-17 is still on the table until October 12th. On the next item, I'd like to have a motion of the second reading of Bill Number 15-24.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extension? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, amending Chapter 615, Public City Code Massage Establishment, Article 2, Massage Therapist Licensing, Section 615.030, License Fee.
Let's have a motion of final passage of Bill Number 15-24.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Senator Jackson, give us the overview, man.
We're asking for this change to the code. Currently, the way that the massage licensing, massage therapist licensing works is that when the therapist comes in to get the license, it is due one year, uh, on their, the date that they purchase the license. We don't have any way in our software to trigger that so that we send renewals, so we're usually late with sending those out. I'm requesting that we do this, that we go to the calendar year like the business licenses so that we can better track this and make sure that they have their current licensing.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Harder?
That is prorated like if they come in in October and want to.
Yes.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Brishers?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clinkingberry?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero. On the next item, I'd like to have a motion for the second reading of Bill Number 15-25.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement on behalf of the City of Republic with Green and Christian County municipalities as to mutual aid for jail and court services.
Let's have a motion of final approval, Bill Number 15-25.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Welcome, Chief Lawton. Give us the overview, sir.
Good evening. Um, this is a recommendation by staff to really extend what was the previous agreement with Green and Christian County agencies that were interested in working with us on a temporary basis with our jail. Uh, the original agreement the council approved had an end date. Um, it was determined by staff, the best way to approach this was to leave it open. Um, the, the report you have indicates some legal changes and some word changes in red to make it more flexible into the future and, and work with these different agencies.
Questions, comments, discussion for Chief Lawton? Anything at all? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Councilmember Clinkingberry?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Brishers?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrelson?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero. On the next item, I'd like to have a motion of the second reading of Bill Number 15-26.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, amending Title 1 by adding Chapter 155, City Financial Assistance Program, to the Republic City Code.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion of final passage of Bill Number 15-26.
Motion.
Time out. Time out. You read it wrong.
I was wondering.
Mayor did not look prepared.
I should have looked up. See, I was just going off.
Sorry. I was trying to be prepared.
That could have been interesting.
What are your motions? Seeing one, take two.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, amending Title 5, Republic City Code Building and Construction, Chapter 520, fences and walls by amending Section 520.020, applicability by adding language regarding permit.
Let's have a motion of final passage of Bill Number 15-26.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Mr. Tyson, welcome, sir. Give us the overview.
Thank you. Uh, almost all of the permits that we issue out of the Planning and Development Department are authorized by the International Building Code. One of the few exceptions to that are fence permits. The International Building Code does not require a permit to build a fence, uh, unless it is over six feet tall. So the City Council adopted a separate ordinance to, uh, require the issuance of a fence permit as well as require, uh, what types of materials and, and where those fences could be located on various parts of private property. Uh, over the years since we have adopted that ordinance, we have run into, uh, several problems with contractors who can come in, build the fence very quickly without pulling a permit, and then be off the site, uh, and, and gone, uh, before the city catches it. And then, uh, it is very difficult to, uh, hold the contractor accountable for that, uh, and we are then are left to hold the homeowner accountable who, uh, in many cases, was acting in good faith and sometimes even led to believe that the proper permits had been obtained. Uh, so what we are doing here is amending, uh, the fence ordinance, if, if that's what you want to call it, amending the fence ordinance, uh, to incorporate some language that will allow us to hold, uh, the contractor accountable if a fence is built without a permit or is built, uh, in a way that does not conform to the regulations.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Tyson?
Does this any way change how the homeowner could be considered liable, or does this just impact the contractor?
They could also be held accountable just the same as before. We're just adding the contractor to the list of people we could hold accountable.
So they're the first looked at in this situation?
I think we would probably handle that on a case-by-case basis, depending on what the facts are in, in any given situation.
Mr. Clinkingberry?
Um, I know in the previous years, maybe on council, there, I know of issues that we've had. This year, have we had, I mean, if people, have you run into this particular issue of building offenses that are built this calendar year?
Yes, we have. Yes, sir.
And is, if we do this, is the plan to actually use this, obviously, if we put this in there and we have the opportunity, and then we don't take action against anybody for a year or two years or whatever, and then we pick one out, we decide to take action against, can't they use a precedent that we're picking on one person? And maybe Ron can help me out on this one. Are we going to pursue each one? Are we going to do it as needed? Or what's going to be our criteria on deciding which ones to go after?
Well, to me, it's whoever the violation is. We don't catch all the speeders. We catch, we catch someone, we got the facts to prove a violation, we prosecute them.
So the ones we know we will.
Well, it's going to be fact-based.
Sure.
You got to be able to prove your case. Uh, and I ultimately have to make that decision as to whether or not I think I've got enough evidence to go in before a judge and, and,
Right, I understand that.
make the case. And so, that, that's where it's going to be. Just investigate it like any other burglary, stealing, you know, anything, and make a decision as to whether or not to prosecute.
So for instance, like in my subdivision, two fences were 15 feet over on the city property. Um, David had to move them, they, they have. But if we run into, tomorrow, if we run into somebody, I guess it'll be longer than that.
Right.
Um, six months from now, we find one that was built, a couple of days from now, that was built over the line, and we, the homeowner turns over the fence company's name that did it, et cetera, we'll, uh, take care of it at that time then, if we, if we have those facts.
Now, and.
I just don't want to have it in there, and then we, the city, kind of, place judge injury of which fence company they're going to go after or not, or what, you know?
So I'd, to, from my per- from my perspective, I'm not the one out there investigating, but from my perspective as a prosecutor, I'm going to weigh the evidence to determine whether or not I got a prosecutable case. Now, if no, if staff doesn't bring me the case, I don't know about it.
I understand.
So staff has got to bring the evidence in, in the form of a report as to who a violator may be, and then I'll make a decision as to whether or not to prosecute. Let's make a point of clarification, Mr. Clinkingberry, that it's not us going after the fence company. If there's a violation of the homeowner, the homeowner's just as much fault as the, so the facts are, it's just, this is not a, just adding language for that, but, uh, if.
Only we've already gone after homeowners up until now, correct?
Yeah, and that's the point, though, is that, this is not just going after fence companies. This is making sure it's equal, split equal, and we'll figure out who the, who to, uh, have a conversation with.
So this really isn't any different than, different than like roofing or any other activity that requires a permit, right? I mean, you're going to have the people standing and zoning for, patrolling the areas, and if they see something, they're going to investigate it, that kind of approach, right?
Yes, that's correct. It just, uh, it has not seemed to have been a problem with any other types of building beside fences. Uh, for some reason, uh, that has been where we have encountered the problems. Um, we've not seemed to have encountered the same problems with accessory buildings or sunrooms, uh, or anything like that. I take that back, there have been a couple of sunrooms, um, in which we've had problems, but mostly it's fences. Probably because that's, that's the most frequent type of permit we issue. That, that may explain that.
Go ahead, Mr. Clinkingberry. Well, I assume a lot of this is a deterrent. Right now, I mean, the homeowner may not be educated on needing a fence permit. The builder should be educated that they shouldn't need a permit. Are we planning to send out a notice to let them know that we've made this change and that they could be on the hook? Because I think that's the biggest thing, is once the deterrent is out to the fence companies, it's less likely that they're going to try to skate around it.
Sure. We, we have previously publicized the passage of the original fence ordinance and made sure to reach out to all commercial contractors, uh, in the area, and I think it would be prudent to do the same sort of, um, reaching out and publicizing of this ordinance as well, just so they know that this is, this has occurred.
Well, I mean, it's not like we want to go after businesses or have problems, or if they don't know, but the biggest thing is deterrent, like a simple letter stating that they can now be held accountable for their actions, but, um, that changes things in the business's mind, at least, most of them. Thank you.
Yeah, I will say once, from the prosecutor's standpoint, even if you've got the evidence of a violation, if there are mitigating factors, I'm going to take that into consideration. So if it's, say, we send out 100 letters and we miss one fence company, and they don't know about it, and they mess up, I'll take that into consideration. But if we've got someone that is just continually violating, I'll also take that into consideration.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Brishers?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clinkingberry?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much. On the next item, new business. I'd like to have a motion of the first reading of Bill Number 15-27.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, amending Title 1 by adding Chapter 155, City Financial Assistance Program, to the Republic City Code.
Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell. Please give us an overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brenda. This program, really the genesis of it was, started with FOGS ordinance and how businesses would be able to comply with the ordinance once it is, uh, finally approved by council, in terms of how to pay for necessary repairs in order to become compliant. This has now, uh, turned into what we want to bring to council is the, uh, a general financial assistance program, not just limited to FOGS, but to any projects, um, that would be carried on by the city that would require participation by, by public, specifically businesses, to, in order to comply with those ordinances. And such a program would be helpful in avoiding delay in implementing these programs. It would give departments flexibility to be able to offer something to help, uh, businesses to comply. Um, I'll go to, let's see, page two of the ordinance, and I want to speak to something here where we would appreciate council's, uh, participation and comments. We purposely left out, um, some information. Um, this would be Section C, which talks about the various criteria for the assistance program, and paragraph number three, the maximum amount of any financial. and paragraph number three, the maximum amount of any financial assistance for the performance of the action shall not exceed blank percent of the total dollar amount of the actions to be completed, or five thousand, whichever is less. So in other words, five thousand is the ceiling for any specific business that requires or needs financial assistance. Now, originally, we were thinking of a fifty-fifty split between, between the city and the business, so that both sides have an equal share in getting it done. In reflection, we're going to throw that up and say whether or not it should be fifty percent, twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent, perhaps a hundred percent. It may depend upon, on a case-by-case basis, what the business is capable of doing on their end, or do they have the financial resources in order to comply? The, so, I'm going to leave that open for right now for discussion. The other point to leave open is the interest rates. This also could be anywhere from zero percent to a market rate already established, prime rate, if you will. But I think we, we want to have, the main thing here is the term financial assistance. Granted, the city wants to see a rate of return on the money, but the main thing in here is to help businesses become compliant, that we are a, they, a partner in the success of their operations. So that's why I want to open this up for discussion and, and get, take council's temperature as to those two factors before we go forward with any kind of passage. So I'll open it up.
Questions, comments, discussion, Mr. Mendez?
Can you give me an example of what type of financial assistance this program would provide?
Essentially, let, we'll, we'll just take a hypothetical here. Let's, let's say that a business requires ten thousand dollars' worth of work, let's say, replacing equipments, repairing sewer lines, whatever is necessary to, to become compliant with the ordinance. And again, as, taking into account the other criteria regarding bids to be approved by the city from no less than two licensed businesses and so forth. So let's say that business needs five thousand dollars. And the question then is, how much are they going to be able to put up with that five thousand? All five thousand, zero, somewhere in between? That is something that we have to take into account here. We could say, well, we're only going to go up to fifty percent, and say, you know, well, let's, let me put it this way, if it's, let's say it's seven thousand dollars, that means we'll, we'll do fifty percent or thirty-five hundred dollars. Suppose that business doesn't have their own thirty-five hundred dollars to be able to do it. What are they going to do? Close? I mean, that's, that's a low, that's trying to give assistance, but it, it doesn't help solve the problem here. So we're trying, we're trying to come up with, with an answer to that.
So just a follow-up question to that, you know, if we're, if we're providing loans or assuming risk in this situation, why wouldn't we partner with some other external entities to provide the funding? Is the city in a situation where they can afford to provide this type of assistance? What's the, what's the limitation on this? I mean, this seems like a-
We'll reclarify. We're only talking about right now the FOGS program, the Financial System FOGs program. So going back on, going back to some of the, I'm mistaken, some of the dollar figures that we're talking about, that some of these businesses are going to be asked to participate in, that's what, that's what we're really referring to, is that particular program, not any other. This is kind of a generic program.
It's a generic program.
It's a generic program, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Let me finish. It's a generic program that we started with the FOGS program, specifically moving to support the FOGS program right now, but he's asking for what type of financial assistance right now. The FOGS program is driving this particular piece, but he said, and that's what Mr. Donald brought you forward, is that it was designed for FOGS, he's expanded it, saying we need just a generic policy to state this is the type of program we need, whether it's a FOGS program, or whether it's some other program, or whether it's, let's say the street was blown up because of a sewer line, or whatever it may be, that their part, you know, they have to fix to stay open, that's the type of programming he's talking about. So it's, right now, it's just kind of a generic program that's based on FOGS. Does that help explain where we're at?
Um, well, that explains that part, but I'd like to continue in the discussion.
Yeah, no problem.
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, let me finish up, Mr. Mendez.
No. That answers my question. Okay. Now, Mr. Clickenberry, go.
I'm not real excited or comfortable about the city getting into the loan business. I understand helping certain situations, and, you know, I'd be more comfortable if the bill was just for one particular case. There's not going to be a ton of these, but to leave it open where people can come and get loans for different reasons. If a business needs a capital improvement, or they're in a jam, there's insurance reasons, if there are a business that can stay in business, then they can typically go to a bank and get a loan. And if it's somebody who can't go to a bank and get a loan, then it's probably not the kind of risk that the city's going to want to necessarily take on either, because that's not a good sign. For us to get into that business of loaning people money, and I know in some rural, specific instances, like this FOGS thing, we say, well, there's a benefit to the city, because technically these people could be grandfathered in, and they're going to have all this stuff going into our sewer system, it, it costs everybody more money to deal with it. In this particular situation, it almost is in our benefit, maybe even in some cases, that we just pay for everybody to be done, because it might cost everybody less in the long run. But, so I can see coming forward with one particular instance like this FOGS, but to open it up where you're giving loans anytime something comes along, you know, I, I don't, I don't like that, that us becoming a bank.
I agree that we should not become the Bank of Republic. We're trying to keep this as simple as possible, at the same time to limit any kind of exposure on city assets, which is why we're, I've, I've seen what other cities have done, which is far more widely spread. Instead of thirty-six months, you're talking ten years, and you're talking a greater dollar amount. Of course, the, the resources of those cities probably can't afford to handle that. We're just trying to keep this as simple as possible, but at the same time, sending the word out that the city does have an interest in your success, because it then becomes part of the city's success as well. And it speaks to a, a city that wants to partner with business, which will drive more business to the city and help it to grow. So what we're trying to do here is at least put together the foundation for a program that will, shall we say, balance both. Make sure that our, our risk is minimal, and at the same time, provide assistance, and that's the key word here, providing assistance, because perhaps it is a case where, yes, they could just as easily go to a financial institution, and for one reason or another, they can't get it. Now granted, it's not like we're going to throw, give money away, like we're going to turn this into, necessarily into a grant. We are, we do have security measures in place, such as requiring, and Ron helped me out on this here a little bit, requiring liens and so forth to, to assure the city's interest disturbance.
Well, I'm not sure we want to go down the lien route. Are you talking about a deed-to-trust? Because there, I thought we talked about that, it's a whole lot more complicated.
Oh, yes, we did. I stand corrected.
A, a thousand-dollar loan, and we're going to spend a thousand dollars doing a title search and closing documents and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, if, you're going to go for a lien, if someone came home from a bank, they probably already have all this stuff, have a lien against it, that'd be a waste, a waste of time.
Yeah, what we were talking about is guarantees signed by individuals, like if there's an LLC involved or a corporation involved, we're not just going to rely on the LLC or the corporation, because they can walk away. We would make the owners also sign a guarantee, so that they're going to be personally liable. If they're going to walk away, you're still going to have to, you know, go through the process of, of bringing a lawsuit to, to recover your loan, so.
On a rest, I mean, restaurants are the number one thing, at least that I know of in town, in any town, that change hands. I mean, except for the big, the big nationwide franchises, the, the local type, that probably needs the help, but those are also the ones that have the shortest duration. They change ownerships all the time, even if they remain the same name, they're always changing from, you know, different family members, or a son to a friend, or whatever, they're, they're just constantly changing.
I understand, I understand being a good partner, but what sparked the need for this? This, that curiosity, is it the fact that we want to use this as a vehicle to show the community that we're a good partner?
Well, not only that, but taking into account that the reason why we have the FOGS ordinance in place is to assure that business, the reason we want businesses to be in compliance is because businesses may not necessarily, you know, are, are taking good care of their own infrastructure, which in effect affects the city infrastructure, which will cause us to spend more money on sewer repairs and related issues here. So the question then becomes is, do you just let things go as they are, or do you get businesses to toe in line, and then, because that will help the city in the long run? But then again, there are going to be some businesses that have the resources, perhaps, you know, you know, you're basically, you know, restaurants owned by corporations and the like, that have the deep pockets to go ahead and take care of this, others may not. So what's, what then do you have? Do you have businesses going literally out of business simply because we have, we have put, we have put this ordinance into place, and they can't afford it, so they're just going to shut their doors?
That's, that's the point I want to make.
Aren't they grandfathered in?
No, they're not going to be grandfathered in. This is a public health and safety issue. There's no grandfathering putting pollution into the sewer system. The, you pass the FOGS ordinance, this is kind of like the fence deal, once it's passed, we're going to go out and enforce it. And if X restaurant is not in compliance, and we say, you need to get in compliance, and they say we can't afford to, then we're going to shut them down, either by taking them to court, or, or issuing tickets or something, and we're going to be fighting a battle over that. The, the whole ideal behind this is, we know there are some businesses out there that are going to be like that. I can guarantee you, they're going to be right in here, talking to you, once we start enforcement. And we were trying to head that, give council an opportunity to head that off. You don't have to. We can say, no, you're on your own, and you're going to start getting tickets on a daily basis.
I think, I truly think that, I completely agree. If you're going to pass an ordinance, if there's health risks, if the infrastructure needs repaired, and we're trying to partner with them to do that, I see the goodwill created by that. I just, I question the risk that it introduces to the city, and my question would be, were there other vehicles that we can arrive at that same solution without creating that liability to the city, i.e. bringing in a lender that would partner with the city to help absorb some of this risk, or something of that nature?
That, that's a sixty-four dollar question. If you've got a business that needs, you know, a thousand dollars, are they going to be able to get a bank to go through the process of making them a loan for that? I don't know.
Right.
That's a sixty-four dollar question.
And I'm not saying necessarily, it's a, I'm not saying necessarily that they are on their own to go out to banks, but maybe that we work with some lender to help cultivate that type of opportunity. Just a thought.
Yeah, I have no idea.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great thought, and I, I appreciate the, trying to head it off. I'm just trying to think through some other options that don't introduce risk. That's just my thought.
I'll answer your question. The FOGS program initiated.
Okay.
That's the question you asked about five minutes ago, right?
Mr. Mendez wasn't here at the last meeting. Are you up to speed on exactly what that was?
Partially.
Okay, that may be part of it, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Harder?
Yeah, the, the issue statement here gives city ability to a certain project, activity to work for in a timely manner. I think we can, we word this to pigeon all those compliance issues, to make it just a compliance, like the FOGS, it's not something we came up with, it's something another entity came up that we have to, the supply to comply with.
Right.
Okay, now, we're forcing, we're having our, our businesses have to comply with, but also, if it's a compliance issue, do we limit this to just the compliance issues?
I, I think I understand what you're saying. You're saying if the federal government or DNR is forcing us to do it, then we force them to do it and have this program? I suppose.
We can limit it to that, I'm sure.
Yeah, we can limit it to that. In fact, the, the part of the ordinance, paragraph B says, the Director of Finance is to promulgate rules and regulations, and part of that could be, this is the parameters that we're going to use. And paragraph A says that this is going to be limited to issues of public health and safety, where action is needed to be accomplished in a timely manner. So we're not going to be out there unless you've got a rogue city manager and, or a city administrator and a rogue finance director just handing out money like lollipops. I mean, they are the ones going to be responsible for making sure this thing is operated correctly.
Sure. But, but saying that, that is an issue that can rare, if I can get.
What's that?
The rogue city manager.
Rogue, yeah, sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm sometimes wondering about GM, whatever.
We, we word this in such a way to protect the city from, or try to protect the city. I mean, I, I, I agree, I think, I think the relationship is good, and health is good, I agree with it a hundred and ten percent. But I don't, I also agree, I don't think we need to open this up wide open. I think we need to really kind of narrow it down a bit on, maybe just make it compliance issues.
Mr. Poole?
I don't know what these fellows know about our reputation in Republic for being not little business friendly, but I hear it a lot. And I think this would be a step to help us solve maybe their attitude toward us, thinking that we just don't care. And that's the attitude of a lot of people. I hear it more than you can imagine, and it may be because I've been on council a long time, it may be because people just, they just come to me. But I don't know what you guys hear, but I do know this. I know we do not have the best reputation for being business friendly, and especially small businesses, and if we could do something to eliminate that name for us, and I think this would be a good step.
That is one of the, what Ms. Poole just brought up, was one of the situations that we discussed when we were trying to put this together, was there are a number of businesses. We looked at, what would we do as a city? How would we determine you're going to be getting a loan or financial assistance or not? We talked about doing it as a bank would do it, fill out all the paperwork, give us your tax returns, you know, we'll go through a loan committee-type process, and then we'll let you know if you're going to be eligible to receive any funds or not. We quickly went back to the small businesses and realized, there's a lot of small businesses out there that can't do that.
That's right.
And they would not qualify otherwise. And I think that's what this program is more generated to, is to help those businesses that otherwise are not, and I don't want to get too deep into this, that otherwise wouldn't be able to go to a bank without, you know, without some assistance from the city.
We have to reinforce that without taxing our listeners.
We would limit that, of course, every year. I mean, that could be a decision that could be made, a budget that will provide X number of dollars to this program every year, and once those dollars are gone, they're gone. So we could have some control, we can place some control over that. It is, and we, and we debated it, all the same questions that came up here, we debated amongst ourselves, trying to determine whether this is a good thing or a bad thing to do. So, but it is to try to help some of those smaller, locally-owned businesses that just have been there for years, potentially, and have had problems forever, and now we're asking them to spend money to do that. The FOGS program, just when we looked at it, and Jerry is here, Jerry Kendall is here, if we need to ask any questions of Jerry, but all of his inspections have come up with ten or fifteen different businesses out there that need to do some substantial work on their facility. All total, it would be about, I think it's forty-six thousand dollars is what the estimate was to repair all of these businesses. Some will be able to just do it on their own, others may not have any funds available, some may have partial funds available, but that was the impetus of trying to put something together, is just to be, you know, of assistance to businesses and make sure that we accomplish what's in the best interest of the sewer system and keep them functional as well.
Mr. Clickenberry?
Um, I, Ms. Poole has a good comment on being business friendly, and I, I have no problems with that. Leaving this ordinance open to where it could be open to anything, I, I'd rather it be that it's directly for this FOGS program. I don't think we will have a lot of these types of situations, but here's, here's what I'd like to see when it comes to council, is that you have the research, you know, like next time, I hope that we have the FOGS on the bill before we have this, because for me to be able to decide the percentage, the dollar amount that would be the maximum, the amount of time that you owe- the amount of time that you allow, I think every situation is going to be different. Like right now, if there's something or a business that's small, needs $1,000 or $2,000, because of the type of nature of it is, you might do two years and you allow almost 100% of the thing. If it's a larger situation, or a completely different scenario, it might be a completely different thing, or the types of businesses it affects. What if it affects only a couple of big ones in town and not a lot of little guys, or whatever? So, it's really hard to put this into one bill, or this could be something that's, you know, you just let, let go every single situation that comes by. It'd be nice to be able to sit down, in this particular situation, and say, "Hey, we want to help the businesses this way, this is how our budget is this year, this is the money we have," and be able to do it. Every single time it comes forward, it's going to be different, and I don't think it'll be that often. My thought is just to have this just for the FOGs this time.
Ms. Poole?
Well, I'd rather see us help 10 businesses and keep them open, as for them to have to close. I don't like to see any business close. And over the years, we've seen several. And a lot of it is because of finances and things of that nature. And I think if we could be a help to them, it'd just help us to be a more business friendly community.
What if we decided on this one, this, this plan, that we wanted to do $2,000, and we'll do up to 50%, and we'll do it for two years, because it works out in this particular situation? What if another situation comes next year, and it's totally different, it's more money, they need more time, totally different things, and all those people, those little guys can't do it, even with the terms we just decided on today?
Can we, can we take care of one plate, one at a time?
That's what I'm saying. Let's make this for this one.
If, I mean, if it, if it comes up that way, but you, we can give the proper authorities, authority to be able to do something without them always having to come back and get our opinions.
But it could be a significant budget amount. I mean, we're talking quite a bit this time.
We're getting ready to do a budget, put it in it.
They don't always come up at budget time, especially if it's an emergency.
Well, something like this, if the rogue city administrator and rogue financial director approves something that wasn't in the budget, they would have to come back for a budget adjustment, and at that time, you could put your thumb on it and say, "No, we're not going to do that." I mean, they got to, they can't do something that's not in the budget.
That's right.
But, that being said, if you want me to bring back a couple alternative possible amendments, one, as Mr. Harder talked about, making it strictly compliance-based issues, can have that as an alternative to a paragraph A, having that in there. Or, as Mr. Clinkenberry is talking about, limiting it to just FOGs, and maybe putting a provision in there that if you want to address any other program, that that has to be approved by council. But as far as FOGs, you're approving that through this ordinance. So, give you a couple of different alternatives, or you could adopt the thing as is, so.
Is there a dollar amount limit we could put on it as well?
Well, you got it, it's in there now, it's $5,000.
No, no, I mean, overall, per year.
Oh, per year.
You can't do that?
You could, you could do it, but you're just, you're just pulling numbers out of the air.
What's your point?
If you, if you play, if you do improvements, you'd have to rely on your staff to know what's coming, and put that in the budget. And if something came up, like an emergency, as Mr. Clinkenberry was talking about, then that would need to be brought back for a budget adjustment, and you make a decision at that time whether you really want to let that be a part of the loan assistance program. I mean, the council's still going to have control of this, one way or another, through the budget process, or through the budget amendment process.
And we can come up with, if there's a question about giving somebody 100% and some other business 50%, depending on the situation, we can create, and we can have a whole bunch of different options, but we can create ranges. Anything from $0 to $1,000, could be up to 100%. You know, $1,000 or $1,000 to $2,500, could be 70, up to 75%. So, we can put some other parameters in there to give more direction, guidance to staff to say, "Here's what, it falls into these parameters, so therefore you have the, you have permission to go ahead and give up to 100% if you feel it's necessary." But limit it to maybe a $1,000, so you're not giving it, you know, all to one business.
But if you're going to take $2,000, why aren't we meant it to one?
Well, yeah. Ms. Saralsen, go ahead.
I, I assume this is, a part of the rules and regulations is this is need-based. I mean, they're going to have to prove the need for it. So, it's not going to be as simple as walking in and saying, "I need $5,000."
The first, the first criteria, which is in the ordinance, is it has to be a public health and safety issue.
Right.
That needs to be addressed quickly.
But I mean, they're, they're need-based.
It can't be just a flabbergasted thing that just, you know.
They have to prove, they have to prove their need for the funds. So, and, and I think it's, I mean, I think saying that it's a public self, health or safety issue, kind of almost pigeonholes it down quite a bit there, because this is something, when you, when you get to the point where, you know, we're being forced to do something, so therefore we're having to force the businesses to do it, I mean, then, you know, they're kind of stuck. And you might have a business that, you know, has been open for three months, and now they're having to do this, they're not going to have those funds. It takes a lot longer than three months to establish yourselves. And I think as long as it's need-based, which it is, then...
And it would, and it would be need-based, and then we would put parameters to make sure we're dealing with, you know, best that we can, you know, valid businesses, but you have to have a valid business license.
Right.
You would have to make sure you're current on your utilities, you'd have to make sure you have a no sa, no sales tax due letter, or no tax due letter from the county and from the state.
Right.
So, there's things that we can do to make sure that they are legitimate businesses. No guarantees, but we could give...
And it is, it is already written in there that if they sell or transfer the property, they have to pay it up. And that's, you know, I mean, there's a risk, there's a risk for us to just let it, you know, to hope that they get it fixed and come up with the funds, or they, if they close their doors, we're, we've lost there too.
There's no way to totally eliminate risk.
No.
I mean, it, it could be, it could be McDonald's, or Burger King, as an example. We could have a national chain like that that's got a franchise holder here, and they go belly up. And, you know, we just get in line with all the other people in bankruptcy court and try to salvage what we can out of it.
The other thing too is...
The only way to eliminate risk is just not do it.
Right. And another way we're minimizing risk is, and controlling the process, as explained in that first paragraph, is also, when they have to submit bids, and those bids will be evaluated by our public works staff, number one, that it is relevant to the ordinance, to the public health and safety issue involved here, that what the, that what the bid is going to do will solve the problem. And then, number two, whether or not that dollar amount is, would be considered market rate or fair for the kind of work to be done. We're not going to say, "No, you can't, no, that bid's invalid because it exceeds X thousand dollars." We're going to say, "Does that look reasonable for what has to be done out there in the marketplace?" So, we, as, as Jim discussed, as I'm saying here, we do have, you know, some safeguards in place. We, there are, there are requirements that the business owner must comply with in order to be eligible for the money. It's not like we're just going, they're going to walk in and say, "I need $5,000," and we're just going to hand them the cash. No, there is, there will be a process in place.
To some degree, taking on risk of the city in this particular situation is good, because right now, every citizen in town is paying for the extra cleanup in the sewers. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not balanced for the businesses that are putting it in or paying all that extra cleaning. So, hav, having some risk there isn't as big a deal. You know, you look at, how am I protecting the residents that I, that I am representing in my ward? I'm saying, well, all those people are having to pay for these, you know, businesses that have this stuff going into the sewer. So, you know, if you give 10 of them a loan, and maybe one of them doesn't go through, and the city loses a little bit on that, in the long run, we probably are a lot better off for all those citizens. So, once again, I'm back to the, "I like this scenario for the FOGs, I want to do it for both the businesses and my residents, I just don't want to have the thing opened up too much to where it..." Because every situation is going to be different as well.
Hey, let me, let me put it this way then. Do we create a brand-new financial assistance policy tailored to the next situation that comes up, as opposed to having some kind of general set of rules that can encompass whatever comes down the road?
You can use this as a template, like we do for a lot of ordinances. You pull out your template, and then you just change based on the scenario, and you bring it, because you're going to probably have to bring it to council anyway, if it's not in the budget to approve. So, why not build it to tailor it for the particular situation? And the dollar amount, the percentage that they're going to have, all, everything's going to be for a particular scenario. It's not that hard to copy the template of a, an ordinance and bring it forward.
Mr. Harder? Sorry, Mr. Harder.
Go ahead.
You said other municipalities do this?
I, yeah, City of Springfield has loan programs in place that obviously encompass more dollars and a longer timeframe. But in reviewing, let's say, city audits that have been done, findings have been found where there have been problems with those programs. That's not to say, it's not a, you know, a good thing, it's to say that there are internal issues in terms of controlling the process. We're learning from those other cities to say, "Okay, how do we control this and minimize City of Republic's risk in the process?"
And what percentages and rate do they look at?
Um, their, their loans are going out to like 10 to 20 years. And I don't have, I don't have those numbers at my fingertips, but I can provide them for you here.
Think, wasn't one of Springfield's programs 4%? Just a flat 4%?
Or something like that?
Something like that. I mean, there's, there's a variety of ways of doing this, it's different lengths. Springfield, we didn't, we didn't throw this on the table. Springfield includes a grant program with this, where some businesses just get the money.
Yeah, right.
And just go do the work, because it's a public, in the public interest to get it done, get it done quickly, and we're just going to eat the cost, because it is a benefit to the citizens as a whole. We talked about that and decided that probably was not the thing that we should bring forward to council. But that's another thing that Springfield does.
So, go, go along with this, and, and try and report, um, I was, I would, i, if we do report this, I would like to make the suggestion of going with the prime interest rate. That way, that way, the city would, I mean, they get that, that rate of the bank, or whatever. So, I mean, you, you give them that option. I mean, well, I have it here, but it has an option to you.
Counsel, just so you'll be clear, Mr. O'Donnell's staff is asking for a financial policy. Let's say a first read. He's also asking that you think about the not exceed amount, exceed amount, the parameters that you have listed out. I think Ryan was going to come up with some, either related compliance issues or FOGs only, a percentage rate. Those things you guys can decide and make recommendations on at, at the second read. You're still at the first read. So, there's really a lot, you guys can discuss it all night long, but, but, however, what we are, is that, that's kind of where you are with that, Mr. Harder.
What I, what I would propose, rather than keeping riding this horse, is if you've got a suggestion for either one of those blanks, get it to me, I'll put it along with the, the other two proposals for paragraph A, I'll put it in a memo format, so that you will have that, and council can just go down the list, vote on any of those changes they want to make, or none of them, and have that available at the next meeting. But you get that information to me, and I'll put it in that format.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Harder? That's really what...
Yeah, that's just, you know, I'm kind of the same, though. I, I think it's a good idea, but I think there's a lot of questions, and, you know, maybe cleaning up a little bit, and...
One last, one last thing, then. This, I mean, back to the so many different scenarios, I'm thinking on this particular one, if it's businesses that are going to really be hurt, and they're really needing the money and everything, we don't need interest. I mean, help them out, give them the money, and divide it over the months, and pay it on their bill, and be done with it. And that's why every scenario is different, is that next time, it might be a thing where maybe we do need to charge interest. Either the city's in a different situation, or it's a larger dollar amount, or a longer term, and you got to get something back. But if it's a short-term, quick fix that we need to do for small businesses, then I would lean towards zero interest. Who for thought for next time?
This is why we brought it up on the radar screen, to get everybody's two cents. Or four cents.
I have my comment, and I, I think we need guidelines, and we need to be as consistent as we possibly can. I, I don't think we should try and judge every scenario, because then we create disparity and reason for argument. So, my thought is, if we can come up with guidelines that kind of address the needs as a whole, we'll be better off. And we would have less maintenance, and discussion, and future issues. I mean, if we're truly trying to help the business, let's just help the business.
Are you speaking like what Mr. Christie had mentioned about having some different templated, or a grid of terms or whatever suggested?
I'm talking, coming up with one set of guidelines. You know, however specific.
When you say, are you talking about the, what's referred to as paragraph B, the rules and regulations? Have you started work on those at all? Maybe we could have those for council to look at.
We can also do that as well. We were just, like I said, trying to see if we can get, come to some kind of consensus with respect to the other points as well, and just keep that out there.
I think we've got enough. I think we have enough to go on.
Are we going to be able to handle both of those on the next meeting? I mean, I'd like to see, I mean, I don't even know which one you'd want to do first, but FOGs.
Well, FOGs, first. Well, we, the reason we did it this way is, we wanted this out on the table so that you'd know, because we feel like we're going to get some blowback.
Sure.
Once we go out and start enforcing that. Give council an option and discussion, like you had denied, about what potentially we could do to lessen that blowback. And this was the, the option we came up with, that's why we wanted to bring it forward before the second reading of the FOGs. Now, we can, because they're not going to go out the next day and start enforcing FOGs, we could table this at the next meeting if we need to, if based upon the discussion, we need more tweaking of the ordinance, or tweaking of the rules that we come up with. So, just kind of play that one by ear if we need to.
Okay. Thank you. Additional questions, comments, discussion? This is a first read. If you have comments or questions, please contact Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Derrickson, and Mr. Christie on that. If you have comments that you would like to make regarding direction on rules and regulation and/or the blanks that are in paragraph C, please contact Mr. Derrickson, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Christie. Thank you, sir. On the next item, I'd like to have a motion to have the first read, your bill number 15-28.
Motion. Second.
Motion, a second. I'll bear to say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the city council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 14.8 acres owned by RLDC LLC, located along the 400 and 500 blocks of West Gray Street, from planned development district PDD, to high-density single-family residential R1H.
Thank you, Brenda. Welcome, Mr. Tyson. Give us your review, sir.
As I mentioned earlier, the, the property subject to this rezone is currently planned to have a high density of multifamily housing developed on these two lots, the 14.8 acres. It is, these two lots are located within a platted subdivision, and so, the transportation facilities, the water, the sanitary sewer facilities, they were all planned to serve that high density of housing. This rezon will actually result in a reduction in density, and so, of course, those same facilities will be more than adequate to serve this lower density of development as well. The high-density, single-family zoning that's proposed is consistent with the city's land use plan. Planning and zoning commission is recommending the approval of this rezon, and staff is also recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Council questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Tyson. Mr. Harder?
I've crossed that hedge down across Gray Street. That is a, what's, what's your zone area?
It's the same planned development district, and those particular lots are zero lotline townhomes, immediately south of Gray Street. And then, as you go further south on Madrid, that is, and kind of an extra high density of single-family housing.
Uh, so, they're through the north, pre-ruining that, uh, be consistent with walking down the course of the street, and...
The preliminary plat is currently under review for this rezon. It's not, it won't be brought to council until next time, so I guess it could potentially, actually, I won't get, I was going to get into that, but I won't. It could potentially be developed with lots that are at minimum 7,000 square feet. Those lots that you're seeing there on Corsca, those are all going to be in the range of 10, 11, 12, 13,000 square feet. So, maximum development, getting as dense as you possibly could in these 14.8 acres, they could all be 7,000 square feet, if you could make that happen. Which would make them all larger than what you see on Grace and Madrid, but not quite as large as what you see on Corsca.
And just go on with the PDD, going back up to the existing neighborhoods, keeping at the same lot size and style layout?
This particular planned development ends at the northern boundary of where this rezon is, and then Sunset Landing, just west of Main Street, it does continue further north, and that area will remain in the PDD, and those are planned to be lots that are comparable to what you see there on West Corsca.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Thank you, Mr. Tyson, seeing none, and there is a, this is a first read, if you have questions, comments, discussion between now and then, please contact Mr. Tyson or Miss Nogal to planning forward. Other business, Resolution Number 1-5-R-63, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, approving the preliminary plat of the battleground of the Moore Cycles subdivision, located along the 2,500 block of West US Highway 60 in the City of Republic of Missouri. Would you like to have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Tyson, give us your overview, sir.
This preliminary plat will create two general commercial lots located in the city, and it will also include a new public street that will extend from West Farm Road 174 north to intersect with US Highway 60. Lot one of the subdivision contains an already existing building that is Kirk's Customs, Body Shop, and Lot Two will be a new vacant lot available for development. The subdivision will also include the construction of the necessary water and sanitary sewer infrastructure to serve commercial development here. The resolution to approve this preliminary plat does contain one noteworthy condition, and that is that MoDOT has not yet approved the design or even the, given permission for the access of this new public street to US Highway 60. They have said that they will not approve it if it is not a public street, so it's sort of a chicken and egg situation. The MoDOT says they won't approve it if it's not a public street, but it can't be a public street until the city council approves the pre-plat. So, staff has gone ahead and brought this preliminary plat forward, knowing that MoDOT has not yet made their decision, but that's why the condition is in there. It is conditioned on Missouri Highway Transportation Commission ultimately approving this access point, as well as approving a design for how the access will work.
Mr. Tyson, please explain if what happens if MoDOT does not approve that.
If they do not approve that-
Go ahead.
If they do not approve that, obviously, they won't be connecting to US Highway 60, which means it is highly doubtful that they will move forward towards construction under this preliminary plat. It would, I don't know, would you say it nullifies the preliminary plat? I don't know that it really does, but-
Really, to nullify it is probably just spurling to submit an amended plat.
Right, they would have to revise it to include a cul-de-sac at the northern terminus of that new road, which is kind of a huge expense to still not have access on US Highway 60, so.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion, Mr. Tyson?
Say it more clearly, they either submit a revision to council, or they let this die. So, it doesn't automatically nullify it, so those are really the choices that developer would have.
Mr. Wilson?
I just have one comment, and that's Highway 60 going by that particular spot in the morning, from about seven to nine, give or take, traffic is backed up all the way past that, up around Joe Jones or a little bit, so I don't see anybody getting out on 6:00 in the mornings.
The motorcycle dealership, they won't open before 10:00.
Yeah, but they don't keep other citizens from trying to get out that way.
That's your own risk thing.
Yes, because there's a housing development just down, just down.
Mr. Tyson? No, it's fine. Mr. Tyson, is there a proposal, right in, right out, only?
Yes, it is extremely unlikely that MoDOT will approve any sort of changes here that would allow for left outs. It would be a right-in, right-out only.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions, comments, discussion, Mr. Tyson? Anything at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries, eight to zero, thank you very much. The next item, Resolution Number 1-5-R-64, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, approving the revised preliminary plat of the Westwood Face Street subdivision located along the 7,500 block of West Farm Road 174 in the City of Republic of Missouri. Would you like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and four seconds. Welcome, Mr. Tyson, sir, you've been up here a while, please give us your overview on this one.
Sure. This particular preliminary plat is already approved, in fact, council has approved this preliminary plat on multiple occasions over the last several years. What is being brought before you now is a revision to the previously approved preliminary plat. The most remarkable of those revisions is that are changes made to the extension of Bailey Avenue, which is a planned secondary arterial in the city that's planned to extend from County Line Road all the way to US Highway 60. Eventually, a portion of that planned secondary arterial is contained within this subdivision. You see it there in the southeast corner, extending from Farm Road 174 to the eastern boundary of the subdivision. The revision that's proposed is that it would only be built to a collector-class subdivision from Farm Road 174 until that first street intersection there with Mission Street, and then from that point on, Bailey would only be built to the extent that's necessary to serve this particular subdivision, and then it would not be built from Prairie Ridge Street all the way to that eastern boundary. Instead of building the road to that collector standard that would normally be required, the developer is proposing to offer the city a financial security to secure the funds necessary to build the remainder of the road at such future time that it would become necessary. Other revisions to the preliminary plat are very minor, just some adjustments to, just minor adjustments to lots, street curvature, things like that. There's an additional lot that will have frontage there on Farm Road 174, that was not previously there. Staff considers those relatively minor in comparison to the Bailey Avenue issue, and so, again, this resolution to approve this preliminary plat contains a condition that the city and the developer are able to come to an agreement on the form and the amount of that security, to be able to build the rest of Bailey Avenue in the future. I should also mention, planning and zoning recommended approval, staff is also recommending approval.
Questions, comments, discussion? Basically, Mr. Tyson, what you're saying is about 236 feet of road that they will be building, that they'll buy.
Yes, that's the approximate.
Thank you. Someone clarify that, counsel. Questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries, sir. Last item on the agenda. Resolution Number 1-5-R-65, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, authorizing city administrator to increase the annual 2015 allowance for reimbursable expenses with Roger Day at Better Projects. Would you like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second.
I can do this one, I guess, if you're not here or you're scared, I'll give him a break, but this really is all driven by our construction activity in town. We had to do this identical thing back in 2013. We've had a cap on our building review consultant, which is Roger Day, Better Projects, at $5,000 for the year. Typically, in a normal year, well, normals in the last few years where we haven't had a whole lot of activity, we haven't approached that $5,000 cap. This year, because of building activity, his reviews fees, which are all reimbursable by the developer, are going to be exceeding the $5,000 amount for this particular year, so we're asking the city council to approve an increase to $8,000, which would cover enough to pay for his inspection fees beginning of the year.
Questions, comments, discussion, or Mr. Christie? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries. I found there's no further open session action by council at this particular time. I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session under RSMO 610.021.2.
Motion.
Second. A motion and a second, all call vote.
Councilmember Plinkinberry?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Brishir?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrelson?
Aye.
Motion carries, eight to zero, this mean is zero, we'll take a five-minute break.